Local community, from a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Brett and Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Northwest Alabama Heating and Cooling, blowing away our competition.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. Would like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council meeting.
Hi, my name is Randy Whitehead, President and CEO of Peoples Trust Bank. I invite you to view the live streaming of Hamilton City Council meetings every first and third Monday at 6:00 PM.
Your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Guin off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
I'm Rick Chambliss with Marion County Funeral Home and Scribe Memorial Chapel in Russellville, Alabama. This is Dwayne Cochran, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes as guaranteed to be there.
Since 1987, Smith Furniture has been in business to serve the community with high-quality furniture at the best price. Some of our name brands are Homestretch, Ashley, Lazy Boy, Catnapper, Lane, Barbasset, GE, Frigidaire, Whirlpool, and Maytag. We offer finance in 12 months same as cash. So stop by Fulton, Mississippi and see Jim, Shannon, and Joe at Smith's Furniture or call us at (662) 862-7412.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guin to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career check and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Tonight, we'll call our meeting to order and we're proud of everyone that's coming to be with us tonight. We appreciate Tom and Jamie. Here comes another guest in.
How you doing?
Our good friend from down on the south side of town. Appreciate y'all coming in today. We've got a few items on the agenda for tonight and we want to move through our meeting in orderly fashion. Before we start, I'm gonna let Ross address us this time and say what's on his mind and have a statement for us.
Yeah, just very briefly, I just wanted to say it's such a great thing to know that the Lord is still in control. It's such an encouragement to see things we have seen in the state and this country in a time when the country's been most divided, at least in my lifetime. It's a great thing to know that the Lord or God is still here, alive, and moving. In the recent weeks, we've seen the Lord move through revivals at Ashgrave, Lee, Sanford, Universities, as well as many other places and not only on the national stage, but here this past weekend at the Dean Out at the First Baptist in Hamilton where around 20 youth either rededicated their lives or surrendered their lives to Christ. As for this reason, I've always said God bless America and God bless the city of Hamilton.
Thank you, Ross. We appreciate that. It is an exciting time. We have some striving vision, even some national scenes that don't look that good right now with war and rumor of war actually happening. So we all need to check our faith and make sure it's strong and that we're willing to stand the test of whatever comes. So thank you for that, Ross. We appreciate it. We're gonna stand at this time and have our invocation, then we'll start our meeting. We'll also have a pledge at the end of the invocation. Heavenly Father, we pause to just thank you for this day of life. Lord, we thank you for the blessings that you bestow upon the city of Hamilton on a daily basis. Lord, any times when we're undeserving, you still bless us. We ask you to guide the meeting tonight and let us be in harmony with one another in our community. Lord, we ask that you would take us from this day forward and keep us in your guiding hand. Lord, we ask you to be with the leaders of our nation tonight as they make decisions that could be life-changing decisions for many, many people. Let us always know that you're the one to look to for true guidance and that you're always in control of whatever is going on. Christ's name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one tonight on our agenda is a recommendation to approve the minutes from the February 6, 2023 City Council meeting. We need a motion for that.
Make a motion.
Ross made the motion with his second. Second from Scott Tower. All in favor of approving our minutes? Thank you. None were opposed. A recommendation on item two would be to declare the following vehicles and equipment as no longer usable by the city of Hamilton and to allow these items to be sold on cobb deals and/or by public auction. The first item is a 1981 GMC 3500 vehicle with last five digits, 64311. A 1987 Ford F-800, VIN 26153. A 1990 Chevy CK20, VIN 60453. 1991 Ford F-800, VIN 04695. 1997 Dodge Ram, VIN number 17727. Also, a Ford tractor, 2910, serial C707614. Also, a Ford tractor, 5600, serial number C573016. These items are all being recommended to be sold and no longer in the fleet of Hamilton. Most of them showing lots of wear and these tractors pretty good shape, but just tractors that we're not using that much. We've got some equipment that doesn't work well with them and so we want to get rid of it and get our best price for all this stuff. So this time, we'd like to recommend these for that declaration.
What we generally do is put it back into like that department, their equipment account so it kind of washes if they're buying anything new and...
Put it toward that?
Yes.
Something like that, if I did.
Got a motion for second. Second from Scott Tower. All those in favor of declaring this as unusable?
Well, they had the street law, they almost stole it.
Oh, they are. That's my understanding. They're behind the street.
If anybody's watching, they're gonna see them before you bed on them or cook your own gun dogs. Just have to look at them. I'm sure they can tell you.
Leave, had some real good results on cobb deals recently. Couple of items were sold at top dollar. Item three is a recommendation to purchase of a 5075E John Deere tractor, a John Deere box blade, and a John Deere 520 loader from Tricarion Equipment in South Carolina for the low bid purchase price of $50,127.06. This will in fact be replacing one of these obsolete tractors.
Make a motion.
Ross made a motion. His second.
I'll say it.
Matt made a second. Those in favor of this purchase, raise your hand please. Thank you. Item four is a recommendation to pass resolution 2023-2-21 that would authorize the city of Hamilton to join the state of Alabama and other local governments as participants in the current and future opioid settlements. This is something we've been involved in for several years and we're almost done with the settlement stage on a lot of this and we need to read up our resolution on this. Do we have a motion?
I think we have a motion.
We have a motion and second by Ross. All those in favor of doing this resolution tonight? Thank you. Hopefully some money from these settlements, that multi-billion dollar settlements are being reached with these companies promoting opioid drugs for years and now they're having to pay the piper, so to speak. I've heard a lot of communities will probably reap some benefit from it. Item five is also a recommendation to pass resolution 2023-2-21B for the city of Hamilton to apply for 2023 United States Department of Transportation RACE Grant. This is Rebuild America Infrastructure and Sustainability and Equity Grant and that stands for RACE. This comes through the United States Department of Transportation to improve safety and efficiency for the existing roadway of County Road 35 by creating a four-lane roadway from I-22 to US 43. The city agrees to provide 10% of the money for a match of this cost project. So with that said, are there any questions before we vote on this resolution? Everybody understand what we're doing? Okay, we need a motion to adopt that resolution. Matt made the motion. His second.
Second.
Second by Wade. All those in favor?
We think the cost cost is somewhere around 15 millions, that accident. So our part would be about...
One point five, probably.
And that might be a year or two before the captain's accident to pay it.
How many years would that...
Do you think it's gonna be done, don't you?
I think we have a chance. We were on a call with the Department of Transportation the other day and they talked about the issues with their prior applications and one of those is a multiple aspect of it, increasing bike lanes, increasing the sidewalks width. Those are a couple of the big things.
They're gonna have to take in quite a bit of property on the side of the road to get that much, four lane and sidewalks and all that in there.
Yeah, just adding a couple of feet to each of those means a lot, but we're working on trying to get that remedied. So that will be a checkmark.
With the traffic increase, the county and the city are eventually gonna have to pay for this project. The RACE grant would be a blessing if we could get it and not have to shell out the money ourselves to do it. We're gonna have to improve that road one way or the other as that intersection develops down there. So I think this is the best way to do it if we can be fortunate and get the grant. It would really take the burden off the city. So I think we should apply. Tonight, we have is our guests, Tom Wise Miller and Jamie Christian. And Tom is gonna come and bring us up to date on some of the marketing efforts that are going on since we're officially members of C3. We're proud of it, Tom. We're also glad to have you with us. So I think the microphone's ready.
Thank you, Mayor. Is the mic up? Can you hear me? Thanks, Mayor and Council. Nothing's wrong.
It may have gone off.
Is it just red though?
Hold it down just a few seconds.
Hello?
Is Tom right there? You can sit there or talk right there.
Come on around and sit with us. The mic is more cocky.
Thank you.
That way the camera can see you too.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I wanted to, we'll follow up with a project update here shortly and kind of get some of the details on those, but wanted to provide sort of the overview of some of the activities we'll be working on this year, especially marketing-wise. And first off, I want to thank the council for rejoicing us with our update piece. Really, we're, I think we're starting to kind of pull the team back together and I think it's given us potentially some more resources and we have some exciting marketing plans for this year. One thing we want to do is do really high-quality, at least a main video, but more than multiple videos. Kind of one of the centerpieces though will be, would be about a minute and a half video that would really feature I-22 and the two industrial parks, well, your industrial parks. As we develop, really probably our best position, most competitive. Don't quote me too loudly on that. And then, of course, exit 30, we're heading in is we have multiple industrial parks and sites there as well. And so it'll kind of zoom in and it'll show where we're situated to audiences outside the region, outside of Alabama, kind of put us on the map. But it'll also, it'll zoom in on these key assets that we have while also showing kind of the big picture of why this is a great place to live and raise a family and work and kind of really sell the vision about a minute. It'll be about a minute and a half. Everybody these days, myself included, we, I think we have shorter and shorter attention spans. So beyond a minute and a half, you tend to kind of lose your audience. And even then, your minute and a half is sort of your captive audience. So we'll have that on our website. If we're doing RFI responses, we'll attach, we can attach that along with the data and property brochures and that kind of stuff. We'll have it, when we go, we're another part of our marketing efforts that we can kind of ramp up this year. Thanks to, really thanks to the efforts. I mean, thanks for contributions and we're kind of have more resources at our disposal. More, we're gonna have more trade shows and conferences this year, especially with COVID being phased out now. We'll be really hitting that hard. When we go to those, we've updated our logo. We kind of have some nice branding and stuff that we can roll out. But the video, we see that kind of playing on a screen that it tends to get people to stop and check it out. So that's another place we can use it. We'll use it in social media. And the reason I mentioned the conference and trade shows, I mean, the digital marketing and that's really important these days, but it's still probably the number one thing in economic development is face-to-face and building relationships. So we are planning, as I said, going to go to trade shows and kind of really, and when we do that, the Hamilton I-22 industrial parks are gonna be one of the prime products that we can, that we can market to a lot of audiences as you know, it's a real situation. And then just in general, I think we're really kind of ramping up the marketing. We're updating our collateral, collateral meeting, kind of your handouts that you give, whether somebody's visiting here or we're at a conference or trade show and kind of your, if it's an automotive conference, it's like usually like a front, one-page front back that shows why you're a great location for automotive projects. You may have a two, three or four-page typed document that gives you more of an overview there. It'll give you sort of, it'll give us an arsenal. We already have the cloud on the missile updated. So we're really trying to ramp up and freshen up our marketing. The industrial park here is gonna be a, as I said, one of the prime things that we're pushing forward. We are also, I mean, we're, I led with marketing and the resources that by becoming a member, that really gives us more, kind of more resources. The board also identified, and I agree with this, that working with our existing industry is really number one, too, and that's a high priority. And we've been doing a number of what we call BRE visits, which are just the acronym Business Retention and Expansion, meaning your existing businesses will oftentimes create a lot of your jobs through expansion. But then other times, it's important to retain those jobs if they're running into challenges, kind of meet with them, figure out if there's ways to link in their resources. We met with NTN Bauer about six weeks ago. We have, we'll try and do, end up doing about 16, if not more per year. We're going to the major manufacturers and meeting because if they employ a couple hundred people, you're definitely kind of getting a lot of mileage out of every visit. We're also looking at ways to connect with sort of the mid and smaller-sized businesses as well. Because I know if you add them all up, that's even more jobs, but it may, it's maybe hard to go to every small business in our three-county region. So we, we kind of try to have touchpoints with all our existing businesses and we want to be in-person in the facilities as much as we can on an annual basis, if not more often, with the major manufacturers. That's kind of an update. And if you have any questions, that the other sort of strategic planning items that the board is recognizing, we were all, I don't know if we're necessarily the lead on this, but we need more housing and of course now with interest rates going up, it's challenging. That's something that we're looking to support. Anybody that's kind of working on that, kind of how can we support that, plug into those efforts? That's definitely a priority as well. And the other thing we hear a lot, when we go on these industry visits, all the companies we've talked to so far are really pro, they're real enthusiastic about education, industry partnerships. They want to partner with the schools, the high schools and the community college on any kind of initiative, sort of modern manufacturing academies and training programs and linking their kids. I think one, we've talked about this before with, there was several decades, there were, there was a mentality that every kid had to go to college, which I think it's great to have that opportunity and that's a, I think that was a, a lot can be said for that. But maybe there was a tendency to sort of route every kid into one, kind of one channel a lot of times. And I think that, so the companies we talked to want to expose kids to how exciting it can be in manufacturing. A lot of times, it's the 21st century manufacturing is, has really good opportunities, not just in terms of wages and career opportunities, but it's not the environment they think that maybe kids or the parents thought it was in the past. So I think that's another thing that, those educational partnerships are something we hear a lot about and we want to support that. We're kind of working on it, have several different initiatives on that, on that route as well.
Any questions, Tom?
So is the college open about, community college as far as the one here in Hamilton? Is it pretty open? Or is it wanting to try to help and...
Absolutely. We have, we've had a meeting a couple times on apprenticeships. I think that's been a high priority. That's been kind of a bigger push for the community college. Some of the companies sometimes are a little bit, I'm not saying nervous or whatever, but if you have a manufacturing environment or maybe there's some, there's a, it's not like it's dangerous or anything, but you might have some heavy equipment and things you want generally, you want a mature person to handle. So there'll be, I think it's just sort of that learning curve to both sides. There may be things a 16, 17-year-old can do before getting, before stepping into heavy, heavy equipment or something like that. But there's, there's some interest in that. We've also heard interest in another, one that's established so far is in Fayette, which is, Pfeiffer has an academy they started with Bevel down there, has about 16, 17 students. And they probably, they sponsor it and they, I think they kind of, I don't know exactly all of the, how it breaks down funding-wise, but they're definitely contributing to it. And those kids are learning skills that will be applicable to Pfeiffer, but also other companies as well. And I think, I think they told us Pfeiffer probably would look to recruit six or seven of them. So there's an additional 10 or so that are potentially going to other companies. We'd like to build on that. Several companies we've talked to are interested in that. I think it's the, one time we heard from one company, when they tried to do that kind of solo, it didn't fully work out. But I think once we, the more companies we have involved, that kind of spreads the rest a little bit. And that's something that we're interested in. I think that will, is talking about doing as well. There's some construction, industry-related stuff that we've talked about a little bit. Tech, there's one program, there's a grant program that is for commercial building trades. And so we're interested in that. We, I think we, the challenge is we need to, we need a commercial contractor to, or at least a couple of them to partner because the money's coming from the commercial contractor side. But if we were to start, if we could start a program like that, and we've had some interest in that, the way we look at it is it would also help the residential too. Even though the purpose of the grant is to help the commercial, and I think you really have to stress that in the application because that's who's paying for it. I think if kids were to go through that program, both kids and adults, that it would help the construction trades more generally, not just the commercial side. That's sort of three examples. But I'd say Bevel's definitely been good partners on that. Sometimes it's just a matter of, they may not do it as fast as business on some things, but I think they're really ready to work with the local companies on some of those issues.
Any other questions? I really appreciate the update on the marketing effort. And I understand maybe the Hamilton Bath Players did an interesting update on their plan also that says including robotics maybe in some areas?
Yes, we were, we were out there a couple times and they, they had mentioned they were gonna do some automation and linked them to ATN and some of the partners. I don't know if they, they, sometimes they, they're pretty independent and I think they may kind of run ahead on that. But that's, I think we're, we'll keep touching base with them because when they're adding people and making these investments, there's, there are resources out there for them. It's just I think, sometimes I'll talk to the companies and they're, they've already done, they've sort of already made these improvements and already hired a couple of the people.
As you said, supporting those people who are already here with business is a good thing, I think.
Absolutely, yeah.
Are there resources, Jason, I don't have a house in the government, which we haven't had in multiple years. We need, we do need houses. We hear it all the time. Is there resources for that? I mean...
The traditional economic development kind of incentive structure with the state isn't really, isn't necessarily set up for that. There are definitely resources when you get into, for example, there's tax, you can get tax credits to do senior housing, like active senior housing. You can get tax credits to do kind of moderate income housing, which isn't necessarily sort of what you think of as public housing. It could be, I think sometimes like 60% of area median income or something to that. The, when it comes to the one channel with the, say, single-family building, new single-family subdivisions, the area, our area, as you, as you know, there, there wasn't a whole bunch of growth over sort of three, four decade periods. You didn't have this big spec, kind of spec builder industry in our three counties. But lately, in the last 18 months or so, the housing's just been getting sold up. It's, it's just got a lot up in the market. Now, that may have cooled down a little bit with some of the national trends because nationally, the industry rates have been sort of off some, but I haven't really seen it locally. We just sort of ran out, ran out of housing. But that, I think there's sort of a chicken and egg thing we run into where if you say, we're gonna do, try to get a developer to come in and build a full subdivision, basically, there's a sort of pioneering element to that where they don't, they're not sure about the market. It's a little bit of a leap of faith. handle that is they'll take the, sort of the first development, they're saying, because the developer's pioneering, we'll, we'll help out with it. Maybe we'll do some of the roads inside, some of the infrastructure. And then, but we won't, you don't do it for the second development, the third development. You kind of, the market will sort of kick around at some point, but it's sort of getting the developer in kind of, in the community and building is that initial hurdle that you kind of chicken egg problem, you have to overcome and then in that case, it sometimes it helps to steady that a little bit.
In a high interest rate environment, does a multi, like apartment complexes usually do, or building at that point, or is houses usually happen, which happens in a high rate environment?
Well, I think it slows down in general, but I think the consumer is sometimes trying to move more into a rental situation when that happens, but the, I don't know if that necessarily, I can get some information on that, but the developer's problem is probably fair, because they're borrowing money most of the time, too. They're not spending their money to build those things.
But rent costs are going up astronomically as we speak, especially in university towns where they, I got a grandson in Tuscaloosa trying to find a place to live that he can afford.
Oh yeah, it doesn't necessarily make it easier. The consumer might want to rest, but trying to find something that's affordable is another matter.
Yeah. Well, thank you for coming. I believe you said you had maybe a question, an address you want to make to the council a little later with my executive session for that, but appreciate these comments and Tom, you're always invited, Jamie as well. Mr. Compassive, you have something for us tonight?
No, sir, I guess we'll kind of say hello.
Well, thank you for coming. We'll let you do that anytime you want to, as a matter of fact. We're sure I was welcome at our meetings. Just wanted to recognize your name tonight. Thank you. At this point in the meeting, with things on the agenda, we do need to move to executive session for a little short address from, something else, some sensitive matters from Tom.
Make a motion. I'll second.
All right, we need to discontinue this meeting and move to executive session. That's the motion. We'll vote on that, please. Okay, and we'll be back to finish up. There won't be any further motions tonight. As far as voting, the vote is all done, so we'll hear from Tom in the session.
Local community, from a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Brett and Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Northwest Alabama Heating and Cooling, blowing away our competition.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. I'd like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council meeting.
Hi, my name is Randy Whitehead, president and CEO of People's Trust Bank. I invite you to view the live streaming of Hamilton City Council meetings every first and third Monday at 6:00 PM.
Your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Guin off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at 205-468-4625.
I'm Rick Chambliss with Marion County Funeral Home and Scribe Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Dwayne Cochrane, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes, is guaranteed to be there.
Since 1987, Smith Furniture has been in business to serve the community with high-quality furniture at the best price. Some of our name brands are Homestretch, Ashley, Lazy Boy, Catnapper, Lane, Barbasset, GE, Frigidaire, Whirlpool and Maytag. We offer finance in 12 months, same as cash. So stop by Fulton, Mississippi and see Jim, Shannon and Joe at Smith's Furniture or call us at 662-862-7412.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guin to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you, with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.